Hi, everybody's here. We'll call the special board select meeting to order. All right, please, for pleasure, ladies, we'll grab your attention to the flag downstairs.
The flag of the United States of America and into the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank SCTV for joining us tonight so we can broadcast our first meeting as a new board, and I'd like to congratulate all of the elected officials on the board of selection. We're fully working with you. We'll begin tonight with public audience and anyone who'd like to address the board. Let's start over here.
Where would you like me to stand? This is a little awkward.
I'm sorry.
How about we bring this corner?
That's perfect.
Okay, so I just want to say congratulations to all the selectmen in the board. Holy well, you all have worked really hard, great.
You have your names written.
Oh, sorry, Amy McLean-Salls. I happen to also be the Democratic town committee chair. This is great town. I did want to sort of start you off by a little hoot memory. And it's back in 2005, there was a rule that suggested that whoever the sitting selectman was, was going to choose the deputy first selectman. And that was a rule that was established bipartisanly, actually, by a sitting Republican, I think. And so it was then held up three times after that. So I was hoping that, and as a matter of fact, it also went to the charter revision, and they actually chose not to change that precedent. So it seems to be that it's the will of the body that we strive for good and effective leadership, which is often bolstered when you have the first selectman choosing who their deputy should be. A change in this process would be an unfortunate signal and a first step down partisan path, which we in Simsbury frankly have been able to avoid. So I'm hoping that because our town is going to function effectively, we should probably try to keep that as the precedent and do the best thing we can for all of us in Simsbury. Having said that, all of you are wonderful, but I have to say that I think that this is not something that has just happened. This is something that has happened for a long time, and I hope it will continue. So thanks again, and I hope to see more of you all.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Alan Needham to basketball lane. I just think it's unfortunate.
Can you get up for the cameras?
Nice try. Back your head looks good.
Alan Needham to basketball lane. I just think it's an unfortunate precedent that we break with what we've been doing in terms of naming deputy first selectmen. I think it's better governed if the first selectman chooses, in this case, who she would like to have serve as deputy. I think it's better governed because they work together, they know each other, and she should pick the person that she feels is best in her actions. And I think that this is the kind of thing we're going to be kind of sorry we did this in the future. It's been like this for a long time, that the first selectman gets to pick her own, his own deputy first selectman without regard to vote total, by the way. I just think it's unfortunate, and I'm hoping it doesn't come out that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy. Yes, sir.
Robert Kalish from Simsbury. I was going to stand before you this evening, and I was just more or less going to address an issue, which is the voters have spoken, they voted for change, and that was it, and I was going to sit down. But seeing that there's a few comments that have been made and the facts have been distorted, I think I'd like to walk you through what has transpired with the deputy selectmen over time. My memory takes me back to a meeting with Tom Vincent that goes way back, and at that time, the top vote getter was John Romano, and he was passed over for Joel Mandell. And at that time, people spoke up about it and addressed the board, the board of selectmen that is, and they said the inequity of it was that the first selectman was disregarding the wishes of the public. Now, we've had this incident under the tutelage of our present selectwoman and the selectwoman elect. We've had that under her two times in a row. The first recollection I had, maybe three times in a row, the first time, the first recollection I have is when Representative John Hampton wanted to post, and he was selected by the Democratic Town Committee, I might add, because when you take away the curtain, the people that are making the decision here are not the voters of Simsbury, in my opinion. They're the voters of the Town Committee, and it's wrong. Now, the second time it's occurred is it occurred with Ms. Heffner, and at that time, it was with Maura, and Maura more or less relinquished it and allowed the first selectmen and the Democratic Party to have their way. And now we have another situation where the voters have spoken again, and it's time that we let, listen to the voters. And the voters want change, and they want a new deputy selectwoman. And if you want to take it, I don't want to go there, but if you want to go there, maybe we should go there. We have four people, and the people that were elected by the public, it's majority rule, and the four are asked who they want, and their wishes should be respected. And the first thing, if we're going to work together like we're told in the acceptance speech, if we're going to work together, the first thing is to respect the wishes of the four elected members. Respect their wishes. They were elected by the people. They have four votes, respect them. And by getting up and saying, "No, we're changing," we're not changing anything. We're giving it to the people where it should be. And in my opinion, it's been with the people all along, but it's just recently it's been decided to change. And I thank you for letting me allow, but I think before you get the facts, before you start saying things that are not so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
David Moore. You team Bob White Way, Weetog. I also happen to be the secretary of the Democratic Town Committee, full disclosure. I have to agree with Mr. Kalishman that the will of the people should be followed. That includes following precedent. The precedent is that the first selectman is the person who chooses who their deputy is. The town reelected Mary Glassman as the first selectman. We should therefore follow the precedent that we've been following for the last eight years, and I would ask that we not take a step down the partisan path, because doing so sets a very bad tone for not only the immediate future, but the distant future. And I would hearken to our friends in the Senate who are right now decrying the fact that the rules have changed. And yes, there are a multitude of reasons as to why the rules have changed, but we don't need to enact our own little nuclear option here in Simsbury. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on. First item of business is the election of the deputy. I am honored that the people of Simsbury have reelected me to serve as first selectman, and I will faithfully execute the duties of Simsbury's chief executive officer. One of the first decisions that the first selectman makes in my term, and one of the first decisions the board of selectmen will make tonight, is to elect a deputy first selectman to serve. Section 603 of the charter states the deputy first selectman shall serve as acting first selectman in the event of temporary absence or temporary disability of the first selectman. There's nothing in the charter which outlines the selection of the deputy. However, since 2005, this board, in fact, the Republican Party and two members of this exact board have established precedent for that selection. In the minutes of the December 5, 2005 meeting, former selectman Ms. Wertheimer noted that the first selectman should receive deference in the choice of deputy first selectman. Two members of this board, Mr. Ascom, who is also head of the Republican Party, and Ms. Hossi, voted for the policy twice and had two chances to change his policy before tonight. I also referred to the city charter revision commission. Neither Mr. Ascom, as chairman of the Republican Party, or Ms. Hossi testified at the charter revision commission or suggested that the former policy of the board be changed. Based on that principle, I am proud to nominate deputy first selectman Lisa Heffner to continue to serve in her role as deputy first selectman. Lisa is the most senior member of this board. She has the most seniority on this board. She has a law degree. She has acted in a bipartisan manner since she has joined the board. To strip Lisa of that title tonight, after all of her hard work and all of Republicans' party's chance and opportunity to change that rule and that precedent, would signal a political opportunism. Lisa initiated the first town and school senior citizen outreach program. She was instrumental in fighting the Farmington River water diversion issue, the equating rate increase issue, and Eno Farms. She has experience as chairman of the personnel committee. She has earned the trust and respect of town staff. She's familiar with town policy. She is a member of the public safety subcommittee. She has been instrumental in emergency response for the town. She's organized the neighbor-to-neighbor program, coordinated volunteers helping each other during emergency. She was instrumental in pension changes in policies of the town. She has also initiated the technology committee. She has faithfully carried out the duties of the deputy first selectman, and I am proud to support her tonight. There is no question that Lisa, again, as the most experienced board member, is the right choice for deputy first selectman. Not only would her selection serve the interests of the first selectmen, which I have been reelected, but also the best interest of the town of Simsbury. I did speak with Ms. Hossi. She did email me, and she did call me in case she was also seeking the nomination. I am a little surprised that she chose to seek the nomination, given that she has twice supported the past policy of the first selectman's choice, as first established by the Republican Party, ironically enough. The only previous discussions that the board of selectmen has had on deputy first selectman has been to allow the first selectman to have the choice, or to allow the highest vote getter to be the nominee. Neither of those situations apply in this case. In fact, if the selection is made to strip Lisa of that title and to give it to Mrs. Hossi, I don't know what the policy or the new rule would be. Is it the second lowest vote getter? Is it who wants the job as first selectman? What is the new rule? I understand that the Republican Party has the votes tonight. I understand they have the majority. I strongly believe, however, that if Lisa is stripped of that title tonight, it will send a strong message to the voters of Simsbury that this is no longer a bipartisan board. I believe it will also send a warning to the voters of Simsbury that the Republican Party in Simsbury will change the rules and the precedent where it benefits the party instead of what's in the best interest of the people of Simsbury. I'd ask for a second to the nomination.
Just a point worth, what is your intention for the process to be?
My intention is to nominate Lisa Heffner, which I've just done, and to see if there's a second.
So then...
We'll follow Robert's rules. Is there a second? Saying no second, the nomination doesn't go forward. Is there another nomination?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. So everybody this evening keeps talking about a rule, and I've been looking for days and weeks and hours and conversations. I can't find anything in writing anywhere in terms of our rules, procedures, or the town charter that says anything other than what you already articulated, is that the organizational meeting, the selectmen shall elect from among their own members a deputy first selectman.
That's correct.
There is no other written rule anywhere.
The only...
So I've got to answer your question.
Okay.
I got to answer your question.
Okay.
So I guess it's a two-part question. Everybody continues to talk about precedent. This isn't a court of law, so precedent doesn't matter from this. The charter governs us, and if the charter doesn't govern us, then the rules and procedure govern us, is my understanding. So can somebody help me? I guess my question is, where is it written now?
Thank you. You are correct. As I stated in my opening remarks, there is no rule, as in the charter, that the board of selectmen would vote on the deputy first selectman. I will direct you to the minutes of two previous meetings in which you, as the head of the Republican Party, voted to support the deputy who was not the highest vote getter, but to defer to the first selectman. That was done when Maura Wertheimer was on the board prior to my arrival. And I'm not done. And then you voted twice. I did refer this to the charter revision commission so that the board could establish a different rule other than the one we had followed, which was to allow the first selectman, since the time I've been on the board and prior to my arrival on the board, the deputy was chosen by the first selectman. You have the votes tonight as the head of the Republican Party. Congratulations, you have four members. You can vote.
I'm a selectman.
No, I'm not done. I'm not done.
I'm a selectman.
I'm not done. You are also the head of the Republican Party, and you may not like them to... I don't know how you sit here tonight. You are both a selectman and the head of the Republican Party. You have the votes, and I would just let the voters of Simsbury watch this and watch and listen and see the first time you have the power and for what you do with it.
May I ask another question?
You may.
So you started off by answering my question, saying that there wasn't a rule, and then you finished answering my question by saying there was a rule. So I'm confused.
Direct your attention to where I said it.
Okay, so there is no written rule.
There is the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Having said that, I place Nancy Hossi's name as the nomination deputy first selectman.
Is there a second? Second? Is there discussion?
I might actually like to say something about that, if I would. And I appreciate very much so everybody being here tonight. Alan for speaking, Amy for speaking, all you folks for being here. I ran against you, and I wanted to be the first selectman in Simsbury. I did that with all good intention, with a commitment to some good work that I wanted to accomplish. There isn't anything greater than for me to step up and do that in the role of deputy first selectman. It is not in front or aside, or in that lack of appreciation at all. It's up to you at all. We all have skill sets that we bring to this board. I am very committed to the fact that my skill set, I think, very closely aligns itself, as I'm out talking to folks about, with where I think we need to go in direction with this board. I want to work with you to do that. I don't want this to be perceived, or anybody to draw conclusions about my intention of why I'm here tonight, and why I've decided, and why I talked to Ari, and went to her office, and wanted to speak about my real desire and interest to do this. And I appreciate SCTV and reporters being here tonight so that they understand truly from my heart where this comes from. And it's hard. This is hard. Doing all of this is not easy. The hours of time that we put into this, sometimes the disagreements, but in the end, the good work that comes out of this is simply all that I want to do. So again, I just can't reiterate enough, people talk about tonight's vote and what we do here, setting precedent for something becoming bipartisan. Nothing could be more partisan than having two leaders from two different parties to work together in this town for the future of this community. And I simply, I appreciate the opportunity to share, as I said, where I come from, and I thank you very much.
Any other comments? Lisa.
Thank you for your comments, Nancy. I appreciate that. And I want to state publicly that had you won first selectman, I would be supporting your choice. Ms. Wertheimer did state the principle orally, it was recorded, and it's that the first selectman should receive deference in the choice of deputy first selectman. It is not an extraordinary principle. It is why we did not see an Obama/Clinton ticket. It is why we did not see an Obama/Romney leadership team. So there is some precedence for that. And again, Nancy, it's not personal. This is a principle I, as you know, I've stated in the past, I've stated, I voted for consistently. There's no change in my principle, but it's the principle I believe in. It's the principle that Ms. Wertheimer established, and I believe she's right.
Other comments?
I realize I'm the new person, the lone person on the table, but I just want to say that, again, I've worked with Lisa on many things over the years, and I have the greatest respect of her ability. And she and I have discussed the fact that when we served together, we didn't even know who was Republican and who was Democrat, because that's the spirit that we work in. And I hope you'll agree with me on that, and that's how we've worked together in the past. And I really think that it does show the bipartisan spirit of this board to have one of each of us as the leaders. And maybe I'm naive, but I don't see why that can't work. I don't see why it has to be partisan all the time. And I really made this vote tonight in the spirit of bipartisanship. That's how I see it.
Thank you. To follow up on that, I'd like to ask a Republican member from the board a question. If you see this as appointment of electing someone of another party on the board of selectmen, will you support a Democrat chairman of the board of finance? Because that is also a very important board, and I would like to know publicly what your position on that would be.
That's not the more perky of the board of finance to decide.
I just asked if you would answer that question.
I don't think it's relevant to the proceedings, Mary.
Okay, that's fine. That's your answer.
That's their decision.
That's fine. I just asked. I just asked to stay on the record that that will also be, in my opinion, a very important vote, which will send a signal as to whether this board is bipartisan or not. I think, just so we're clear, what is the rule tonight that's being established? If you get the majority votes and you run for first selectman and don't win, you take the second prize, which is deputy first selectman. What are we telling our children that the rule of bipartisan cooperation is the first decision out of the box that isn't political decision, that is always, which both Ms. Hossi and Mr. Ascom have voted for twice, to give deference to the first selectman? Not only that, but Lisa has the experience on public safety, has worked in emergency. No other board member has that experience. I think that it is the right appointment for Lisa. It is the right appointment for the board. It is the right appointment for me. And I'd like to tell the voters of Simsbury, what is the rule you are now using?
We're not invoking any rule other than following the charter, Mary, because you and I have already debated, I think, twice now, and that was the third one. There is no rule. We are following the charter.
Fine. So I will, again, just reiterate that I know what this vote is. It is a strong message to the voters that this is a partisan board. The votes that we've had in the past that have been unanimous, that have been cooperative, are gone, and I just think it's a sad night for Simsbury, and I think it sends a strong signal to the voters of Simsbury. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay? Emotions carried. We have a left rule for the deputy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The next item is a review of conflict of interest form requirements. All board members are required to fill these forms. I did speak with Selectman Payne, and I did have a conversation with him. I did call town attorney to advise me and to advise Mr. Payne what items that come in force, does he need to recuse himself for. Mike's company does currently have contracts with the town in excess of $99,000, and I did speak with Mike, and I did ask that he voluntarily get an opinion for board ethics so that he and I, the board of selectmen, could follow. So I'm just advising the board that Mike and I did have that conversation, that town attorney has advised, that town attorney cannot advise us on that issue. It has to be on advice of the board of ethics. So I have informed the board, and I have informed the chairman of the board of ethics that Mike will be in contact with him. So I wonder if you want to add anything.
You outlined our conversation fairly well. I intend to have a letter to the Ethics Commission regarding this possible conflict, which I'm sure a number of people, maybe not my particular instance, will have other conflicts with. And, you know, in the event anything about our services, excuse me, comes up, I will recuse myself, if any reasonable person would do.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I think that that's helpful once the board of ethics rules will know which items that, as we would with any board member. I know Ms. Heffner also sought a legal opinion on her husband's stipulation for Hartford, and it is a good guide in making sure that we serve the people of Simsbury.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Should we all go to ethics for all of our disclosures on our forums?
I'm not aware of anyone else on the board that has a contract with the town, but if anyone does have a contract with the town, I would strongly recommend...
So that's what's driving you?
Yes. Mr. Vincent, who also had contracts with the town, also sought a legal opinion, so there is a precedent. But again, you know, our goal is to do the people's work and to keep everyone clear as to what they can vote on with a pen. If you have a financial interest, obviously, the board knows to recuse themselves. If you have a question, you're welcome to go to the board of ethics, which is a nonpartisan group, which will clarify the rule before you vote. And our goal here is just to make sure everybody knows what the rules are before anyone asks a vote, just to keep everybody clear. Any more questions? The next item is to approve the residential document, rules and procedure. This is exactly what was adopted by the last board of selectmen. I know that the board's not had a lot of chance when we knew this, so we can certainly change this if we would like. We can adopt it tonight and bring back changes to the next board. It's really our governance and our rules, and it's exactly verbatim what we have been using as a first select.
If you permit me, I took the order me out that I've been on here for two years to make some small updates and then some potential additions. Again, I just finished this this evening, and I wrote a redline version of our prior little...
Copy to the public?
I did not, but I do have one for...
We can share. Thank you.
Get it to the record officially. Again, so these are the same numbers. There are two additions at the end, and one substantive addition, one and two, just changing a couple of words in there. There's a couple of numbers I typed on this. But so if you permit me, the substantive changes, we're starting Rule 2. We potentially remove the word when possible to material will be issued four days prior. It's been, one challenge of mine is that, you know, sometimes we get things late, I get, you know, that it's, sometimes it happens, but really trying to make sure that all the material gets to us.
Just at one point, if, for example, something happens where something needs to be on the agenda and it's not committed to the board four days prior, we'll not go vote?
Well, we can still amend the agenda, and that's up to the board.
I'm just, you know, I'm just, sometimes there are special meetings. My advice is that, I have no problem, no objection to this, but you may cause problems with department heads who sometimes submit something, because there's a grant, or there's a deadline, and town staff does the best, you know, all of the items on the agenda are driven by town staff or the board, and I am happy to accept this as a friendly amendment. I just would caution you, maybe put in some of the town's business efforts.
Well, maybe we'll look, maybe we'll take out my add on that one, but just let me go through a little bit more here. So further down, it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines, special meetings, maybe not just due by the first selectman, or by all of the three other selected, just to give us additional flexibility.
Again, just to comment, selectmen can't talk to each other prior to a meeting. It would be conversations that are not subject, that are not available to free information. I don't know how three selectmen could confer, put something on the agenda, and I don't know how staff would get the approval of three selectmen without having a meeting. I think I would not support this. I think it gets us in trouble. I think it has three selectmen talking to each other, which is a forum, and I would strongly recommend that not be included.
In Rule 3, I just articulated seven. For seven of the parents, there's a substantive change there. Rule 5, just five spelled out by minutes of the body, it's called comments of the tag. The typo in Rule 7, routing to routine. Rule 8 is unchanged, and line is unchanged, or pen is unchanged. Personally, I believe you know we've done it a century. Rule 11 is a substantive change. I mean, just thinking out of the box, we don't articulate what temporary absences?
I would object to that one. It's left by the charter, just as you said tonight, there is no rule. I think this is a violation of the charter. I think it is, you know, temporary absence is for the charter. I think I would get a legal opinion on this, and I think that this is going to open litigation. Because I think this is a problem. I think there's a statutory problem in how you're defining it. It's not defined in the charter, and I think the definition would be part of charter change. This board can amend the rules they want, but I will seek clarification by town attorney. I think it will be found.
Okay, and your only intent here, Mary, is just to make sure that this is...
You know what? And I appreciate this, if you hadn't shown it to me at the meeting at 6:00, 7:30. If I had an advanced copy, I could have had it sent to town attorney, and I could have had town attorney advise me as to what. But tonight, seeing this, I say it's very dangerous.
And again, my intent is, again, to clarify, we had a situation, you know, a year and a half ago with the storm when you were out of town, and, you know, John ended up being the, you know, the head being...
And for 374 years, we've had a first selectman and a deputy. And I do want to clarify, when, I think...
Been five storms in three years.
Yes, and I've been... Yes, and I've been here for all of them. I was here a couple hours late because my plane got back late. But, you know, you have the majority votes, feel free, but you, you're opening up the can of worms.
All we're trying to do is just articulate a couple...
And if I had the affirmative saying this, I could have...
Mary, I told you, you gave me my agenda when I walked in the room.
This is the same thing you've worked with for, you know, for how many years?
And my twelfth would be just affirmative, hopefully, this is a matter of practice, I believe, and we don't have to make a rule that long. Number twelve is affirmative of the selectman, a matter of whether you refer to a Subcommittee of the Board or any of the town boards, which we did that regularly. I don't think we get a rule for that, but I mean...
That's permitted by Robert's...
Just trying to be creative.
It's permitted by Robert's Rules of Order. Also, you know, again, it just requires that one more thing we put on the agenda, that the board doesn't have any problem with our practice and with Robert's rules, that it would be up to you.
So, I take care of some of those. So, again, those are my thoughts. Again, nobody's seen any of that. I just finished.
We have to adopt, we have to adopt rules procedure, or we have to adopt suggestions that Mr. Ascom placed in front of you. I'm sorry, I thought you just said that we don't have to do this.
Well, we have to adopt this temporarily. We have to adopt a rule tonight so that we know how to work at the next meeting, prevent it from falling. But we should not start our first business without having the rules...
I agree.
Lisa?
I would take the notion that we adopt the rules of procedure that you provided us in our packet, and put in front of the changes that Mr. Ascom, to Town Council for an advisory opinion.
And we should have a take on that, so we can...
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is to approve the special meetings for 2014. We've done our best to check, make sure that we have avoided the state holidays and avoided religious holidays and school vacations. So, this is submitted as a regular meeting item. Certainly, the board of selectmen can call special meetings if necessary, and we certainly have done a lot of those during budget workshops. We will have a number of budget workshops, and I think this is a good start. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is liaison appointments. I want to thank everyone for submitting to me their liaison appointments. This is the prerogative of the first electman. I did have to make adjustments after I spoke with Mrs. Hossi, and it was indicated that she would be the deputy first electman. I did just a couple of changes, just did want to let the public know that I am sorry Mr. Ascom will not continue to serve as chairman of public safety, but I do think it's important that the deputy be on that committee, especially given that the current deputy doesn't have any experience on that committee. So, I did make that adjustment. I also asked the new deputy to take over the Eno Farms Subcommittee and also replace Mr. Ascom on Hartford Subcommittee. Next item is the reappointment of town attorney and town labor council. Again, I have received letters from both our labor council and our regular council that they are interested in continuing to serve as the town attorney. I have conferred with town staff, and is very appreciative of all the hard work of our current town attorney and the excellent job that our labor council did. We have secured that there is no increase, and has been no increase since 2008 for town attorney, and also continuing the weight of Siegel O'Connor, O'Donnell Beck, and, again, current town attorney of the town of Simsbury. That would be my recommendation tonight.
Quick question. Two years ago, for my first meeting, the motion was made to appoint town attorney to not succeed here. And then last November, we decided to retain town attorney for another year, and the motion that made by Lisa continued retention of town council on the San Jacinto additions for county year 13, and RFP to be issued in November of 13 for selection of council for this role in '14. And Representative, then deputy selectman, Anthony, seconded that. So, my question is, did we put an RFP out in the legislature?
No, that was the old board. This is the new board. Under the Charter, the new board has to select the town attorney. So, it follows the same thing as the deputy first electman. You're selecting what the rule is. So, the old board didn't have the power to issue an RFP, and the process would be, if this board wishes to do an RFP, we will get that out. We will ask individuals to serve on the interview process. It is very time-consuming. We are happy to do that. That's the wishes of this board.
I think the concern was raised by many different folks, some that are so important, some that aren't, that that hadn't gone out to bid in a while. And it was just the government that had a bid once in a while. I have no issue with the town attorney's performance, but, again, if there are higher rates in the marketplace, or if there are other options, it'd be interesting if we perhaps explored that once. My own...
I guess, Mary, my question would be, how long have the existing companies been in place?
Oh, ten years.
I believe 1998 was when Bobby Chrysant started to serve as town council. And my understanding is that Siegel O'Connor and Peter James, in particular, started working for us in 2008. And there, again, as I think Mary's in the kit, the rates have not gone up. I know since at least 2008, it's been flat. I can surface, you see, because I'm the one who probably puts the nickel on the legal machine most often.
Well, thank you very much.
We've tried to do it. Actually, I'm happy to say those numbers are low when they happen, but both councils have served well. And certainly, if this board decides to issue an RFP, we'll do everything we can to do it correctly.
Just, and that is the point that Tom made. The rates are stable. We have a very unusual arrangement that we can call without being appealed. It's a flat fee. It encourages staff to call before decisions are made. We also have a big change in staff. We are losing a lot of folks. We have a change in the board of selectmen. We have a change on board finance. And RFPs for legal counsel are a lot of work, and we're happy to do it. And this board will have to sit in on a number of interviews, and we're happy to do it. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of the background as to why we thought at this point. Maybe that wasn't such a good idea.
So, when was the last time we went out to bid on this?
Before my time. I'm assuming that when Siegel O'Connor was picked in 2008, that would not have bid, but that's just an assumption, Sean.
Question?
Well, I was just going to say, I liken this to, we all shop our insurances and our various things that we do every once in a while, and rates may have stayed the same, but I think it would be who has to, you know, check against where we could do something, explore the option, maybe hourly, whatever other options that might be out there, and if in the end we actually end up with these folks, they have served us well, but I think it would help us to do the double check.
So, with that, I move that we issue our RFP for town council and for labor council.
Is there a second? I have a second though. For the discussion?
The only thing I would ask is that the board continue the retention of the two attorneys